Now they're all coming in. Here we go.
There we go.
See if they'll pop the quiet.
Here we go.
Okay, uh, the third item is approval of minutes for May 2nd, 2018. Is there a motion?
I move the motion.
Third, a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ralph. Any changes, errors, or omissions? Lou, seconded by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Um, under acceptance of agenda, um, I'm going to ask for a motion for some changes tonight. Letter D, action on amendment number six to the agreement for engineering services. I have not had a chance to speak with the engineering firm on some fine points of that, so I'm asking that we, uh, not have that on the agenda tonight, and I'll put it on a future agenda. And in addition, under new business, letter D and letter E, the fourth quarter transfers. I was told that the Board of Education did not meet last night because of the storm, so they were going to give us a recommendation for the Board of Ed Maintenance and the Board of Ed School Lunch Fund. So I do not have that, so I'm asking that tonight we not have that. So we're going to remove those three items. Number seven, letter D, number eight, letter D, and letter E. Is there a motion to amend that?
I'll second that.
Sure, I'm, yeah, I'll, I don't know if you need me to say it up.
No, I think Sharon got that. Motion made by Jim and seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item, under communications and correspondence, um, I just wanted to, because we have a lot of items on our agenda, I just wanted to call your attention to a couple of matters. Um, the adoption of the mill rate tonight. I put in your packets, three options. Um, and this was not shared ahead of time because we kind of found out about, um, additional dollars and grant funding from the state late last week, and had it confirmed early this week. So I've put in your packets, and we'll, we'll consider this. Uh, an option A, which is no change, an option B, which would be utilizing half of the grant of education cost sharing to defray, um, uh, mill rate, and the last to utilize all of the additional grant money, um, for defraying increase in the mill rate. So I just wanted to point that out to you, so you have that. And with that, I don't have any other correspondence. Before I open it up for public hearing, I, I know last time we had a lot of very good public comment, and I wanted to point out that during public comment, we typically don't engage in back and forth conversation, but that doesn't mean we're not listening very carefully. Um, and if we can, I certainly would be able to give an answer, but I didn't want anyone to think that we're being rude. Um, we just don't, um, comment back and forth. It's your time to speak as public comment, and we welcome that, and we listen, and it's important to us. So with that, I'll open it up for public comment, and we'll start on this side of the room. Yes, and remember, name and address, please, for the recording secretary. Thank you. Good evening.
Um, Annabelle Marushak, A-N-N-A-B-E-L-L-E-M-A-R-U-S-C-H-O-C-K, 97 Middlesex Avenue Extension. Um, I recently received the FLI paperwork I requested from the Town of Portland, and I've been hearing that the reason Rocky hasn't been released is because it'd be a liability to the Town of Portland, and it has been stated that somehow the town could be held liable if Rocky hurts someone again once released. Attorney Tom Page spoke at the last town meeting and stated that in the work, he hasn't heard of a town being held liable. I have also heard, heard, been hearing from people, what if Rocky attacks again and is a child? When I received the paperwork from the town regarding lawsuits involving dogs biting people, I saw four cases, one of which was Rocky, and one of which is a privately owned dog, as well as two other cases involving two of Portland police dogs. I'm guessing most people don't know that there has been two incidents in Portland where Portland's police dogs have attacked two innocent people, one being a six-year-old child just getting off her school bus. I have brought some copies of the news articles regarding that case with me. The other was a woman walking down the sidewalk outside the police station. Guess what happened to those two police dogs? They weren't put on death row, or as I prefer to say it, sentenced to be killed. Police dogs with specific training on how to attack someone under the command of their officer were given second chances. But, but a dog like Rocky that hasn't received any training and doesn't know better won't be given the same chance. That just doesn't make sense to me. With, with that way of thinking, that would mean no dog which bit someone should be given a second chance, even a police dog, and that's not what happened here in Portland. One last thing I would like to say is, I know many people use the word euthanization in these types of situations, but actually euthanization means to put down an animal or human that is, that is suffering or very ill. The only thing that is making Rocky suffer is being locked up at the pound away from someone who loves him very much.
Anyone else in the front row?
My name is Donna Dubay, D-O-N-N-A-D-U-B-A-Y. I live at 8 Penny Corner Road in Portland. I'm a Portland resident, and I also vote in Portland, and I don't think I could have said it better than Annabelle. I too went to the town hall and looked through, uh, they pulled all the lawsuits in Portland. There has not been one single case where the Town of Portland has been held liable for any dog bites. That being said, um, Paul only had the dog for four months. I don't think it's fair that Rocky has been locked up for two and a half years, and this is one incident of a dog bite. We've heard some stories about what transpired prior to the dog bite, and I think Rocky deserves to go home. Uh, Paul's already been sued for $125,000. The case has been settled, and I think Rocky should be released and sent home. The Town of Portland residents have offered to set up a GoFundMe page to raise money for a fence to help Paul out. Um, I am willing to contribute, and I'm willing to donate my time and energy to set up the fence. Um, I have two rescues. Rocky represents my dogs and all the Portland residents who have dogs. So I think we need to be aware of this situation. Rocky represents all of our dogs, and I would be devastated, my child would be devastated if my dog was locked up for two and a half years. I don't think, I, I can't imagine what the dog is going through being locked up for two and a half years. Um, again, when I read the cases, I did read the police dogs, um, cases, and like Annabelle said, those dogs went through significant training. I think Rocky deserves a chance to be trained and, uh, to have a fence and to be sent home to live his life out with Paul. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this side of the room?
Hello, my name is Paul Bell, B-E-L-L. I reside at 187 Old Marlborough Turnpike, and I am Rocky's dad, owner. I just wanted to say that I, uh, I'm prepared to put in place any measures that anyone would feel would be an equitable solution to this issue. I, I've gotten fence quotes, uh, I have people that want to volunteer. I have, uh, everybody wants to even, uh, help out with supplies to, to do so, and the labor. I just feel that we could come to an equitable solution, and, uh, all parties would be happy with that. And I'm prepared to meet with anyone to discuss these matters. Also, I, I'm, I'm in this to fight for Rocky's life. I've been doing this now for two and a half years, and I'm prepared to continue until we come to the end. So as far as legal fees are, are concerned, uh, I, I'm just prepared to continue the fight, and the legal matter will continue until then. I'm just hoping we can diffuse this beforehand. So thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to somebody else.
Could we just wait until, make sure there's no one else? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone else on this side of the room?
On this side?
Yeah, we'll start on this side.
Hello, I'm, uh, my name is Danielle Piatti, D-A-N-I-E-L-L-E-P-I-A-T-T-I. I reside at 35 Strickland Street. First off, I just want to know how many here are dog owners? And, you know, I believe Rocky should be returned to his owner. You know, enough is enough. Um, I've heard these victims, victim, that this isn't their first rodeo. Seems to me they like to collect money and cause chaos. There were no witnesses around on that day, and again, Rocky shows no sign of aggression. He's lovable, playful, and the poor dog is confused. He just wants to go back home to Paul Bell. I own a pit mix myself, and the sad thing is, these poor dogs get bad rap. Fencing and training is there for Rocky, and Paul, let Rocky go home. No. Uh, this has been bothering me too. Um, incident that happened a while back here on Main Street in Portland. Dogs were being walked on the sidewalk with leashes, minding their own business, and a dog came out of nowhere, and this isn't the first time this dog has gone after people walking and attacked and killed a poor innocent dog walking with his owner. The owner of the dog who killed was asked by ACOH quarantine his dog for 14 days at home. 14 days for killing a dog. I don't understand that one. Why is Rocky any different? Rocky, Rocky should have been quarantined at home too for 14 days and giving Paul that time to fence his yard and then train with Rocky. Two and a half years and a pound is ridiculous. It just makes me mad to see and hear this, whereas a dog killed and was set free. Rocky attacked, so we're told, but I know he was provoked. These people aren't too friendly. Wife is afraid of dogs. If only Rocky could speak. We're all here to help Rocky go home. This world we live in is sickening. More humans out there doing worse crimes. Get a slap on the wrist, in jail for murder, but now Connecticut law, no death row. But dogs, what? Why? Can anybody answer that? Dogs, nope, we need to kill, which is, to me, I, I'm not going to say it. I love dogs more than humans, and I believe Rocky should go home. Wake up, Portland.
Donna Dubay again. Um, so, yeah, she brought up a point I wanted to bring up, which was a dog actually mauled another dog, was not quarantined for 14 days, and the dog, um, is still with its owner. And I just don't understand what is so different about Rocky? Why is Rocky being punished? And, um, I was bit by two dogs in Portland on my property. So again, it was the owner's fault. They didn't have their dogs leashed. They didn't have a fence, and it ultimately, it is the owner's responsibility for containing and controlling their dog. And I was bit by two different dogs in Portland. Um, the dogs were not taken away, the dogs were not, there was no kill order for these dogs, nor would I want there to be, because it wasn't the dog's fault, it was the owner's fault. And Paul has already admitted, he made a mistake by not realizing that he needed, needed to have a containment system, a fence, and I think he's more than paid for this. He has been, uh, you know, anguished by this for the last two and a half years, wishing that he could turn back the hands of time. I know he's willing to do whatever to bring Rocky home safe. And all of us who have dogs and love our dogs and are Portland residents uh, totally support him, and we want to help in any way, and we do want Rocky to come home. Again, Rocky, it, it could happen to any one of us. It could be my dog locked up. So again, I think, I don't really understand why Rocky is being made an example of. This is a one-bite incident. Um, so I think Rocky should come home, and whatever is put into place, I'm sure Paul will abide by that. Um, but, you know, o- other people can be bit, and nothing happens to the dogs, and a dog can be killed by another dog, and Rocky is going through something extraordinary. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
My name is Tom Page, P-A-G-E. I reside at 226 Kenyon Street in Hartford. And, uh, I'm, I'd like to try to dispel, um, two issues. And, and Annabelle was, uh, great in getting the documents from the town of whether the fear that the town claims of potential liability has any basis. And as I think we all now know, there's never been an incident where the town was held negligent and therefore liable for releasing a dog. I think if the town were to release a dog and not take reasonable steps, then by definition, they would expose themselves to being negligent. So the way you don't be negligent is to be reasonable and prudent. Releasing Rocky with reasonable restraints prevents a plaintiff's attorney from down the road from suing the town, because the set, that town would be liable not for Mr. Bell's activities of allegedly letting the dog run loose and bite again, but they'd be liable for their own actions. And so if they were to release the dog and say, hey, Mr. Bell, here's your dog, do whatever you want, and the dog bit again, absolutely town be liable. But as we know now, the town's never been held liable, and I assume it's because the town's always been reasonable. So, uh, I hope that, that the town, uh, select board understands that the idea that they would, they fear liability if they were to release the dog is eviscerated with the town's reasonable precautions they would take when and if they were to release the dog. The other issue, uh, that I'd like to bring to the select board's attention is another common refrain from towns who, uh, seize dogs and then issue kill orders, and then the owners appeal. And, uh, we hear time and time again from towns across the state, well, it's out of our hands now. The town, the, the owner has appealed, and since he's appealed, this case is now in the hands of the Department of Agriculture and the court systems and the lawyers and, and everything else that, that they think therefore precludes the town from doing anything. And while it is true when an owner appeals a kill order, and there is a subsequent hearing at the Department of Agriculture and a decision made, and there may be a, a subsequent appeal to the court system, the Superior Court would be the first place, those proceedings certainly take place. The reality is, and I'm going to quote and read you something from the Attorney General's office, the reality is that the town issued the order, and the town can revoke the order whenever they please, no matter what stage in the process, legal process there may be. The Attorney General's office has said, and they're talking about a case, perhaps some people in the audience and perhaps some of the select board members know, uh, about two dogs that were in Hamden, are in Hamden, have been there for five years in the Hamden pound, and the dogs' names are Cato and Cleo. Cato and Cleo have been in the pound on a kill order for five years, and it's gone all the way up to the appellate court of the spring, of the state of Connecticut. And, uh, the refrain from the town is, we can't do anything, it's the state's decision. And low and behold, the state's, just, will tell you, it's not in our hands. The town can revoke the kill order whenever they want to, if they want to. And so we have two government entities who are both pointing the finger at each other, and meanwhile, the dogs are living out their lives in the pound. On June 18th of 2014, one of the attorneys for the Attorney General said, and I quote, "It is really only the town and the dog owner who have anything to actually negotiate at this point." And this case, at this time, had already gone to the Agriculture Department, had already had a final decision to kill the dog, had already been appealed to the Superior Court, and they were in the process of the beginning stages of that appeal in the Superior Court. I'm sorry. So it is really only the town and the dog owner who have anything to actually negotiate. For instance, I suppose that with court approval, the town and the dog owner could agree that the dogs are to be permanently, are to permanently leave Hamden and have other restrictions imposed. If that were to occur, the department, meaning the Department of Agriculture, would require that the underlying appeal to the department, the kill order and the appeal of it, be withdrawn in the court settlement, which would essentially nullify the final decision to kill the dog. So I hope that the town does not say it's out of our hands, because it's not out of your hands. You made the decision, you can revoke a decision, as much as any other town in the state can. If you continue to, to maintain the position that you want to have the dog put down, then and only then do the legal procedures, the appeal, the final decision, the appeal to Superior Court, the appeal to the appellate court, four years later. Those continue only because the town continues to want the dog killed and the owner continues not to want the dog killed. So as long as those two parties still stay on their positions, then the legal process will come into here, and will make those decisions, and whatever happens, happens. But as you well know, if Paul Bell decides he doesn't want to fight for Rocky anymore, then you'll kill the dog. And if you decide you don't want to kill the dog anymore, then the dog lives. So either party to the dispute has the unfettered right to revoke the decision they've made at any time, and, and, and the legal proceedings are not an impediment that at all as referenced by the Attorney General's opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the side of the room. Anyone on this side want to speak tonight? Yes, sir.
My name is Paul Glynn. I live, uh, P-A-U-L-G-L-Y-N-N. I live at 385 Main Street. I just want to express my opinion that this whole situation with Rocky has gone way beyond ridiculous. As we all know now, the dispute can be resolved between Paul Bell and the selectmen. And one point that I think has been overlooked is that Paul Bell adopted this dog from Animal Control after he was certified that he was not aggressive or a danger to the community, and now you've changed your mind. So somewhere here, a mistake has been made. Either the dog was aggressive and a danger to the community in the first place, which has been overlooked, or the kill order is a mistake. And one other point that I'd like to bring up is that I'm sick of hearing the word euthanasia in regards to Rocky. Euthanasia is defined as putting the dog out of his misery because he's, uh, in pain or suffering, or he's, he's, uh, too sick to continue, which is not the case here. The town has the, uh, ability to rescind this order, and that's what I think should happen here. Another point that I've seen made on Facebook, well, why doesn't he make, why doesn't he build a fence? At this point, a fence is a complete waste of money if he's not going to get the dog back. If you tell him you're going to get the dog back, then we build the fence. He's got probably over a thousand people lined up to help in this case, to volunteer time and money, whatever it takes to get a fence. And as far as leashes go, I've got a whole collection of them I can give you, because the dog I had passed away last, last spring. And another point is that, um, Rocky is not a danger just because he's a pit bull. My brother lives here in town, had a pit bull for well over a decade that never bit anybody. So... So far, we're more than 25 minutes into public comments here. This is going to keep happening at every meeting, because there are enough of us supporting Rocky. We've gone 25 minutes into this meeting, and so far, that's all we've talked about is Rocky. And this is going to continue at every one of these meetings, as far as I'm concerned, because from now on, I will stand up here every week and make the same case for Rocky. I'd also like to add that I vote. Thank you.
Anyone want to say something? I'm going to start with this side. And then we'll come back.
Hello, um, my name is Carol Anne Valesse, 7 Jordan Lane, Portland. Because my nieces won't get up and speak, I have to. Yeah, um, last, you know, as soon as we came in, um, Selectman, uh, Brandsville, you, um, noted that this is public comments, are for public comments, and you could not answer. So I said, gee, why are we even coming then? And then I'm watching all of you, and I see one, two, five, and six. Look at the speakers with three and four. You really don't look at us, although you are with me. So I'm trying to find who's interested in this and who isn't. Last time I came, because I didn't realize what public comments were all about, um, I added, uh, my issue is with Rocky more than it is with anything else, and if he's going to be put to death, I mean, will you just do it? Um, but you can't just leave him down there. Uh, and what I was really upset about last, uh, the last meeting was that all of a sudden, he wasn't able to walk, that walk him. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that you said you were going to have one of the policemen come and explain it to us? And so when you said that comment tonight about, we just speak, you know, I said, where's that coming from? But anyway, you know, I don't want to get on anyone's bad side or anything, but we really are very interested in this dog. really are very interested in this dog, because we're all dog owners, and this could, I don't know what I'd do if you ever did this to my pup. So, you know, I try to take this group serious, because I don't even want to be here, but I will come for them every time they come out here. So please, try to listen, and if you can revoke this, why don't you just make it simple? You know, give up whatever's going, and let's just not waste tax dollars, not keep the dog suffering any longer. We'll pay for the fence, anything you want, it will be paid for. So that's all I really have to say, respectfully to all of you.
Melissa, did you want to speak?
I'm a little short, do you mind if I move this, sorry? Sorry. Got it?
If it broke, don't fix it.
Thank you, sorry. That wasn't me. Hi. Okay. Also. Hi, good evening. Good evening, Susan, Michael, nice to see you. I'm here tonight on behalf of Mr. Bell, oh, I'm sorry, name, Melissa, M-E-L-I-S-S-A, Valente, V-A-L-E-N-T-E, 19 Rome, R-O-M-E Avenue, Middletown, Connecticut. I'm here tonight on behalf of Mr. Bell and Rocky. First, I'd like to start by saying, if I may, real quick, to Annabelle. Thank you for stepping up for Rocky on his behalf. I know it took a lot of courage, and I applaud you for that. And thank you for the love and compassion you have for animals. You are the next future positive leader. Excuse me. And I know your mom and dad are very proud of you, along with the community. Next, I would like to talk about the FOI, Freedom of Information Act. According to public records, the town has never been held liable for a dog bite. If you, the town, have put that kill order in, it is the town who can revoke that kill We're just being asked if you would please maybe release Rocky back home, of course, with restrictions. Many of us, I know when it's come up in conversation, are willing to donate money, donate our time to get that fencing installed for Mr. Bell and for Rocky. This is a very lengthy process for the town, the court, and Mr. Bell, while Rocky sits in the pound, and the taxpayers are paying for that. I'm hoping everyone can come to a logical solution soon, in hopes this does not hurt electoral votes. Rocky was evaluated by Natalie, and she spoke at the last meeting. And is Natalie here? No, Natalie's not here. And Natalie is a trainer, and she is also a behavioralist who specializes in pit bulls. And Natalie is willing to take on Rocky full-time training. Rocky showed no sign of aggression. All dogs need love, guidance, and training. Rocky didn't even have a chance to decompress when he was adopted from the pound. You know, so he, I mean, really, he only spent a short amount of time with Mr. Bell with, you know, pretty much no training and no decompression time. So we're asking you to please consider revoking that kill order, and Rocky come home with restrictions. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah.
Alana Tuttle, 12 Russell Avenue, I'm a voter. And I'm here not only to support Paul and Rocky, but I also want to make this board and this panel aware of what's going on. The town of Portland, the community of Portland, a 10-year-old girl and her friends are speaking and coming to you with legal advice, with different types of ramifications of other dogs, with solutions for Paul and for Rocky, okay? If you've been on our community Facebook page, you see all the negativity that people in this town have for one another. Someone says black, the other person says white, someone says red, the other person says purple. In this room tonight, there are a handful of people that are here, including a 10-year-old child, which is miraculous. In the age of bullying, in the age of social media, this child, as well as all of her friends, have chosen to come here and speak in public to a board of adults. I can't think of anything, I'm 42 and I don't like it, I can't think of anything more daunting, and this girl has such passion, and her family has such passion for animals, that I don't think that should be overlooked. I think that every single person that's sitting here should respect what we are doing and what Annabelle is doing for Paul and for Rocky. There are so many things that are in place, and so many things that I feel like Paul would agree to do to save Rocky and to bring Rocky home. Look at this room, look at the love, look at the togetherness. That doesn't happen, and I can fully show you on the Portland community that that does not happen. I want this to be known and to see everybody in here that this is because of Rocky, and only to respect the wishes of Annabelle Maruchak and all of the kids in Portland who are rallying for this dog. Thank you.
I'd like to comment on the episode of the dog at the intersection of Coe Avenue and Main Street. At least a fair number of you in here know that I walk. And my route takes me down Main Street, almost down to Strong's Avenue, into the bridge, you know. And after the incident with the dog on Coe Avenue, I did not see it happen, but I did see the reaction of the owner of the dog. He was broken, he was heartbroken. But now, when I do my walking after that incident, I have changed my pattern of walking down Main Street. I would go do my route, and you don't want to know the whole route, we'll be here until next week. I would walk down to the, on the Trinity Church side of Main Street, down to where the last house on that side of the street has a sidewalk. I would cross over, and I would continue down towards Strong's Avenue on the other side. After that event happened, when I came back, I crossed back over to the other side of Main Street and continued back on the opposite side of the street of the intersection of Coe Avenue and Main Street. I'm not going to take a chance that dog's gone after me. Interestingly, last week, when I walked, I almost panicked as I'm walking down the street, and there's the dog. With the owner, he was on a leash, and this time, he had his muzzle on. He doesn't always have his muzzle on. That's all I have to say.
Thanks. Any else? Yes.
Annabelle Maruchak, so Shirley actually helped me and my friends. She got gift certificates from Petsense in Cromwell, and they present Mr. Bell with the necessary supplies to bring, like, Rocky home safely. Like, there's money for a new leash, new harness, new muzzle, and stuff like that. So, thank you.
Yes. Mr. Glynn.
Again, my name is Paul Glynn at 385 Main Street. I just wanted to add to the previous speaker that I live almost directly across the street from the dog that she's referring to. And I want to say that I spend a lot of time standing out on my porch, because I have to go outside to smoke, and I've seen that dog numerous times. I've never seen him to be aggressive. He's walked on a leash, and my sister has gone across the street, and she has a passing acquaintance with that guy, because they're both dog owners. And she goes across the street, and she pets that dog, and he's not aggressive at all with her. So just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Mr. Glynn. Okay. Also, a public comment, and we'll move on to the next item. If anyone needs an agenda, there are agendas up here for your utilization. The next item that we have on our agenda tonight under Old Business is letter A, the resolution. We had a public hearing before this meeting started on the Neighborhood Assistance Act program, and there is a resolution. I'm going to read it for the selectmen. Whereas the state of Connecticut, Department of Revenue Services is providing the town of Portland the opportunity to participate in the 2018 Neighborhood Assistance Act program, I should say, thus allowing interested nonprofit organizations within the municipality to submit applications. And whereas, in accordance with the state of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services, the Board of Selectmen shall hold a public hearing on all programs, and the governing body, the municipality, must vote to approve these programs. Now be it resolved that the town of Portland does hereby designate the first selectwoman as liaison to handle all Neighborhood Assistance Act matters. And I think we should add, well, we said it in the beginning, that we are, and that we will participate. I think we should add that, and that we will participate in this program. There was no contra indications to participation at the public hearing, so with that addition to the end of that resolution, is there a motion to approve our participation in the Neighborhood Assistance Act program and designate myself as liaison to handle all the matters?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Thank you, the motion carries. The next is related to the Neighborhood Assistance Act program, and that is that we have received one application for this program from Community Renewal Team, and it would be for a playground at Valley View School, and they will attempt to get donations for that, specifically for the Head Start program up at Valley View. And we need to set a public hearing date for us to hear comments on the CRT application, which I have in my office for anyone that wants to review it, and there's some here tonight. And any additional applications that may come in prior to that date of June 6, and anything after, we will accept them until probably the 20th of June. I would suggest that the public hearing be on June 6, Wednesday, June 6, at 7:00 PM here in the Mary Flood Room. And is the Portland Library, is there a motion to that effect?
I'll second it.
Mike, seconded by Ralph. Any discussion on that public hearing date? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries. The next is the reappointment of the engineering firm for the design consultant services for the Town Center Village District Overlay. We did, and we did share with you that there were about, I'm not sure that I have it right in front of me, but I did share it with the selectmen, we did have about eight applications, only two of which were the Level 3, and they were for Brainerd Place. The last time we discussed this, there was concern that maybe there was many that would be a phase, or a step 3, I think it's called, Level 3.
Tier 3.
Tier 3, thank you. But there aren't very many, and the one that was, was a very large application, that's a 30 to 40 million dollar project. So I would open it up for your discussion as to whether you want to approve the contract.
Yeah, I think we, a little bit of the additional research on this is that, for the most part, the majority of these were Tier 1, which right now, because of an association, I believe, with COG, there is no fee for. This is one of the things we attended and paid attention to the discussion at the Economic Development Council.
I'm handing out the applications that we did get. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, no problem. So for the majority, for the majority of these, there really, there was no charge associated with it. I think there was also a concern, and this was another point of interest, in that, for example, if somebody was doing a roofing project, that this could trigger additional cost in doing that. And what we got confirmation of is that that also would be covered under a Tier 1. So right now, it's a very, it's a very economical program, the way it is currently structured, so I don't have any problems with it as is.
Yeah, I agree.
Would anyone like to make a motion to have the one-year period ending 6/30/19 for this contract to occur? So you have a resolution in front of you, it's reappointment of the engineering firm for design consultant services for the Town Center Village District Overlay Zone, and its anchor engineering services, they would be the agent, and you're authorizing me to sign on your behalf the contract renewal, which will be July 1 through June 30, 2019.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Rick, seconded by Jim. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries, thank you. The next item would be, would become's letter D, which is, I put back on the agenda, any comments that you may have on the town charter, because we were asked to do a review, so I'll open that up.
I just have one suggestion under page four of eligibility. It talks about the eligibility of Board of Selectmen. It seems that the boards, commissions, committees, for the most part, don't have people from the same family or relatives on that committee, and it's not noted in the charter. I just wanted to add it.
Aye.
Or is that understood by state statute?
I'm not sure, I'll have to look it up, and I don't know if it is in the ethics of that, I'll have to take a look. Why don't I do some homework and put it out to you? Okay, thank you.
All done. Yep.
You do when you're about to retire.
Are there any appointments to boards and commissions tonight? I don't have any. We'll go under New Business, Set the Mill Rate for the Fiscal Year 2018-2019. And you do have, in your packet, it's green, there are three options, as I announced early in the meeting. The first option would be to leave it essentially at the 1.42 mil with no change, based on the grant that we have received from the state for next for next fiscal year, which I will tell you, the amount is $479,216 in additional revenue that we did not know we would be receiving until late last week. So, that's $479,216. Option B would be utilizing half of that amount to defray or reduce the amount of the mill rate increase. And that would equate to $239,608 and a mill increase of 1.13. And Option C would be utilizing the additional revenue of $479,216, excuse me, toward defraying the mill rate for 2018, 2019. And if my calculations are correct, it works out to 33.81 mills, which would be set. And I believe that's .83 mill increase. Is that right, Jim?
Yeah, which is, I believe, about a 2.5 increase in the mill rate.
2.5%.
Yeah, 2.15% mill increase in the mill.
2.15 or 2.5?
No, 2.5.
So, I'll open it up for discussion. Jim, did you have something?
Yeah, I mean, I, I look at this and I look at what, you know, from the budget vote. I think that the town, looking at a significant increase because of the cuts to the state, you know, approved a certain amount of work that we have to do and to fund a certain amount of services and support for the town. I think getting this windfall, I think it would be appropriate for us to give it back to the taxpayer. It's already not an insignificant increase. But using this money to reduce the mill rate to the 33.81 mills, I think is good faith with the taxpayers and what they voted for on Monday. And I'm not sure how much discussion, but if we want to, I'm ready to make a motion to that effect.
The only thing...
Well, made a motion, it's been seconded by Rick. Discussion, Ralph?
Yeah, I support that as well. I think the only thing we have to note, though, is that the way that the legislation went, the education money should be secure. But that doesn't restrict the governor from taking away from somewhere else and leaving us with another deficit somewhere else. But we'll go on the premise to be optimistic. And I would agree as well to support option, the third option.
I had a question.
Yes.
I had a question on the second option.
Yes.
If in fact, we were to go with the second option, there would be some of that money put in the general fund? And some of the money would be used to reduce the mill rate?
Well, the revenue is coming to the town of Portland. When you put the budget together, you have the expenditures and you have the revenues. So, when we put it together, we needed 1.42 mills to equal the expenditures, which are going up 1.16%, a very small amount. The 400...
Seventy-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-sixteen dollars.
Will, you know, we're told it's coming to the town. We trust that it will, that the governor won't hold it back like he did this year. He did hold back money that we were promised by the legislature. They did pass within the budget, the General Assembly did, and the governor signed it this week, that they can't remove, as I understand it, any of the education cost-sharing money, which is the bulk. And as you pointed out, they could reduce other areas. So, if you use some of it, Lou, to address the mill rate, the extra would be there in the event that you needed to make a supplemental appropriation, in the event that you wanted to have a bigger surplus at the end of the year. You can't spend any more money than is authorized by that vote last Monday unless you have what's called a supplemental appropriation made by this board that then has to go to the voters. It's one-half of 1%. In addition, goes to a public hearing. Anything that exceeds that amount has to go to a town meeting and so forth. So, the dollars would essentially sit in the quarters.
Okay, so, the reason I ask that question is that the Board of Education had come to us and told us that they came with a 0% increase. However, they also said that their special ed needs may be, may cause them to exceed the amount of money they have in their budget group. So, my thought was, if in fact, we had some reserve money, some reserve ECS money coming from the state in our general fund, and the Board of Education said, you know, we need it, we wouldn't have to have a town meeting, we could allocate, we couldn't allocate that money.
Because it's expenditure, you would have to get permission from the voters. I'm not saying that you can't. But you can't just change the budget. The budget's been voted on. So, you would have to get permission from the voters whenever you spend more than the 34 million and so forth that we passed.
But the Board of Education could come to request more funding from the Board of Selectmen?
They can, tomorrow, if they choose to.
And that would, that request would not require a town meeting?
Yes. The request can come at any time. But the actual appropriation has to go through, as is outlined in the charter. So, it would still be there. I'm not saying that the money won't be there. But it's really up to this board. As I had explained, there was some confusion from people when they were voting as to whether they were voting on a mill rate. You were voting on what we predicted we needed at the time we put the budget together, which was April 11. But since that time, there was, the General Assembly passed a budget and now the governor signed it. And we know that this amount of money will be coming to the town. There is, I will say, consideration that this board needs to recognize what Lou said. There may be additional need within the Board of Education. I know that they're very valiant in their spending and very careful. We have our liaison here tonight, Dave. But they're always upfront with us and let us know that there may be the need. So, I don't want to say that there might not be. In that case, you won't have extra, so to speak, within the funds. You do have approximately an 18, 17% fund balance. 17% of our expenditures are in our fund balance, which is a healthy fund balance. And it's necessary for when we go out to bond. And it's also necessary for the event of untoward things that happen, whether it's bad weather or we have a terrible catastrophe, additional special ed students who come in and we have to spend money. So, those are considerations. Good discussion. Are you ready for the question?
I'm ready.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Option C.
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? No extensions. Thank you. The next item is adopt the non-union... What's that?
Okay.
Letter B, adopt the non-union administration pay plan, 2018, 2019. And you have it in the purple. And I did put at the backs of your packets the information that we have this year. I believe it's a 2% pretty much across the board to the pay scale. And there's ranges for some of the jobs. And some of them are specific. I will put it up for discussion.
So, wait a minute here.
These are all the non-union, non-collective bargaining positions that the town has, some of which are part-time, some of which are full-time.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, were these rates taken into consideration when we did the budget?
Yes. And on this page, yes, on that page, the range, most folks are below the maximum. They're somewhere between minimum and maximum. But we did increase so that there's enough flexibility there.
And the increase was 2%?
Yeah, for each individual, that's what I mean. And I believe Tom put it together and made the 2% on the various rates that are listed.
I want to note that I can certainly abstain from voting on this. My daughter is going to be in her second year and is going to be working as a park and rec youth counselor. So, I'm going to abstain from the conversation and the voting on this one.
Are these, any of these full-time or is it strictly part-time?
If you go on the back page, I'm full-time. Town clerk's full-time, library director, land use administrator, youth services, senior services, parks and rec, executive secretary to the first selectman, librarian. Three is an unfilled position. Building official is a full-time position. Library director, assessor, public works director, finance director. All of those are full-time positions.
Yeah, okay.
My salary is not an increase. It's the same as the current year. There is no increase in mine.
Why is that?
Because I didn't put it in.
Okay.
And I think that some of the, like moderator, I don't, I think moderator went up. I'm not sure that the Board of Assessment Appeals went up. Those are very minor stipends. So, to answer your question, Rick, yes, when we put the budget together, the individuals' salaries or predicted salaries, because we have new positions.
Yeah, well, like the public works director was different, yeah. Well, a 2% pay increase does not seem exorbitant to me.
It's similar to what the collective bargaining units have this year. It may not be the same exactly, but it's similar. Okay, is there a motion to approve? Are you ready for the question? You're out.
I'll move.
Lou? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
And I wasn't the one who abstained.
Well, you didn't vote. You recused yourself. I think you should note that you recused yourself.
All right, so I was recused.
So, just the maximum.
So, no vote from you. You did not vote.
I think the issue with that, it's not...
Adoption of other budgets. Now, some selectmen had asked me about some of the other budgets. Animal Control Fund, Town Aid Road Fund, Youth Services Fund, Resource Recovery Fund, the Building Maintenance Fund, and the Parks and Recreation Fund. The way those are managed within the budget, they receive allocations from the general fund, the transfers. You saw that section of our budget about transfers to other funds. So, while Animal Control, Town Aid Road, and so forth, most of them are funded from other sources. There's a grant for youth services. There's a grant for Town Aid Road. There's some grants that we get within some of the other funds. The majority of those dollars do come from a transfer from the general fund. They also, these special funds, receive fees. So, as we know, Parks and Recreation, they generate fees. So, all those fees stay within the fund. Any money that is transferred from the general fund to these individual service funds stay in those funds. So, when they need extra dollars, they do have money in their fund. It's a little bit different than what we were talking about Board of Ed, Lou. These, they can utilize their funds because you're approving them tonight to go into that fund. If they don't spend it, or it stays within that fund. And it's mostly because they receive grants that are earmarked for those particular functions or they receive individual fees from the programming and so forth. So, every year after the budget passes, we approve these budgets. Because now we know the dollars from the general fund can go into this fund because we have permission from the voters to do so. And the same for the capital improvement budget. That is a transfer into the capital budget. The capital improvement budget for fiscal year 1819, it's outlined on the attached. It's in the amount of $729,824 with $405,500 being town source-funded projects, $125,000 water source fund projects, and $125,000 sewer source fund projects, and $74,324 State of Connecticut-funded projects. So, that is what you are approving. I'll open it up for discussion. No questions?
I had a question on the Town Aid Road Fund.
Yes.
Didn't we talk about that earlier, saying that they didn't, the state hasn't given us the money this year and it doesn't look like we're going to get it next year? So, we're still able to do roads, but it's going to come out of the general fund?
I believe this year, we got half a payment for doing the roads this summer. The fund has enough within it to do the summer projects. And the prediction of the monies coming from the state included Town Aid Road. So, whether or not they give it to us, of course, is the age-old question. Because as Ralph pointed out, that may not come to fruition. So, but we did, I don't think, I went to a CCM meeting this week and they indicated you're probably not going to see the second half of Town Aid Road Fund this year. But hopefully, you'll see all of next year. Good question.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the adoption of the other operating budgets for fiscal year 2018, 2019?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jim. Further discussion? There is none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries. The next item is the contract agreement with TNS Camenito Concrete LLC. And this is the long-awaited sidewalk project that so many of us, including our public works directors, worked very hard on. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes first selectwoman Susan Bransfield to execute and deliver in the name of and on behalf of the town of Portland a contract with TNS Camenito Concrete LLC of 1,700 Saybrook Road, Middletown, Connecticut, 06457, for the purpose of bid number 2018-06 Sidewalk Project. Total contract amount prior to any required change orders is approximately $684,438. And this amount includes add alternates number 1 through number 4. So, it's the base bid plus the add alternates number 1 through 4. And that is below the amount that we are allocated, which is $1 million. There is additional monies that we will spend, of course, including engineering and oversight of the project. But the actual contract with Camenito came in very favorably at the $684,438, which includes the alternates 1 through 4. I'll open it up for discussion.
I think we were fortunate to get a bid from, from a construction, basically from a firm that has done previous work and did, from the accounts that I've heard, a good job. And it allows us to hit all of the priorities that were established by the sidewalk committee, including, you know, both sides of the streets and the additional work that we wanted to do in terms of some ad hoc. So, this is, I think, a win for us moving forward.
Well, I want to thank the sidewalk committee. I want to thank the public works director. Jacobson Engineering assisted with this as well. And this board, along with the taxpayers in the town, that agreed that they wanted to improve the infrastructure of our town. It's really a great project. It hasn't been easy.
I have a question. Once, when are they going to get started realistically?
Well, if you pass this tonight, I can issue the notice to proceed tomorrow, I believe. I will contact them and hopefully as soon as possible.
And then, along that line, that line is, about how long will it take to complete the project?
I think Rick has a better answer.
Rick?
It's a seasonal project, that's why we need to get it moving. It's, I spoke with the contractor, he estimates he can probably get 75% of it done in this season of the fall. The way the contract is set up is we shut down its concrete. You don't want to do it later. We can start back up in the spring and should be completed by next summer.
Phases, yeah.
With the estimated oversight costs, how much extra dollars do you think we'll have for additional sidewalk work? So, the bid's about $684?
Probably... Probably very little. And the reason very little is because this does not include the work that has to be done on Spring Street. So, from Main Street to East Main, and perhaps up to Greystone, will be paid for by the sidewalk allocation. And I think the estimate was $129,000, Rick? That's the estimate.
Okay.
That would, about $80,000 in oversight is what's budgeted, we may not spend that much, but that's what we have allocated. And then we have some contingency as well. I think it's about 5% contingency, somewhere in that range, just in the event that we need it.
And who provides the oversight, the $80,000 we pay?
Jacobson Engineering.
So, they're the ones that are... And is that typical and customary charges for oversight on a project like this?
I would say it's, it was something that we knew beforehand, it's something that we can always revisit.
I'm just more curious than anything, I don't know how it works.
Yeah, we don't do a whole lot of these.
Right.
It's an hourly rate estimate, and at hours or less, you're paying an hourly rate for the inspection and the construction acting, so I'm guesstimating that, I'm not an optimist usually, that you'll spend less than the $80,000, some amount less. I'm also optimistic that possibly the Spring Street portion will be a little bit less, so maybe in the end we'll hopefully have someone, not a lot, but some.
Great news report. Awesome, thank you, Rick.
Some of the things that have to be done, just to give you an idea, the design was approximately $56,000, I think it came in less than that, that was what was budgeted, but it's, I believe, thousands of dollars less. We did some tree removal, that's approximately $5,000. Concrete testing will need to be done, that's approximately $10,000. Construction administration and inspection is budgeted at $80,000. The base bid was $502,915.50. The add alternate number one, which is the north side of Waverly Avenue, was $39,258. The add alternate number two, which was the spot improvements west side of Main Street, that's $34,075.50. Add alternate number three, which is the south side of Fairview Street, that's $52,183. Add alternate number four, which is the north side of Freestone Avenue, and the east side of East Main Street, $56,006, for a total of $684,438. Add to that a 5% contingency of $35,000, comes to $874,38, and a budgeted amount for the Spring Street sidewalks of $129,562, making it a total within our budget not to exceed $1 million.
Thank you, Susan.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion made yet?
I'll second it.
Did you get that? Sure. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. The next is the contract award for Route 17 recreational park complex, and, I have a folder on that in case there's questions that come up. It's deep in the box here. Okay. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes First Selectwoman Susan Bransfield to execute and deliver in the name of and on behalf of the Town of Portland a contract with Dorita and Sons Construction Company Incorporated, Post Office Box 797, Middletown, Connecticut, 06457, for the purpose of bid number 2018-04 Portland Town Park Project. The total contract amount, excuse me, prior to any required change orders is approximately $5,599,000, and this includes the base bid and alternate number one. And alternate number one is the entrance to the project, which has some wetlands implications and is a bit more complicated than what you might think you need to do. I do have for you, and I want you to just take a look at it, received this today, a summary from Weston and Sampson of the three low bidders, so you can take a look at this. And Dorita is the low bidder, after Weston and Sampson reviewed all of this. The base bid for the construction of the Portland Town Park is $5,241,000. The next low bid was Guerra Construction Company at $5,910,000, and Damato Construction was the third lowest at $6,138,71. Alternate number one, which is what we are choosing to do, was bid at $358,000 by Dorita, $376,000 by Guerra, and $455,640 by Damato. I'm not going to go into all the other alternates, because we're not considering those tonight.
So, what did we decide to do with the entrance in Strickland Street?
Jim, or Ralph?
Ralph or something.
So, where it stands at that point is that, you know, we're so far down the road on that entrance, that the concern we have is that if we go on a different route, we could seriously impact the overall project. So, they have identified, things were identified in their meeting with the state, that they have indicated they've addressed, and it's really a matter of just getting a final check and blessing, is what they've told us, with regards to the entrance, so that's kind of where it's at, you know.
Can you describe physically how it's going to be?
So, what happened?
I mean, without, I mean, just roughly, or...
So, the intent, the big thing what we ran into throughout the whole time with the park, was the concern about safety, right? So, throughout the time we were talking about, the whole thing was, was important to us was to make sure that we came in perpendicularly to 17.
Okay.
So, you have a very good view looking either way, we wouldn't have the challenges you might have now, trying to go in on our streets. So, what happens is, if you, when you come down Strickland, Strickland's going to swing slightly through the wetlands area and come out perpendicular into 17, so that from a Strickland standpoint, that's how it's going to flow.
No more funny angle to Gospel Lane.
No, no more funny angle. From a standpoint, anyone coming in from 17, obviously, they're coming to this road, this entrance, and they just either turn left or right on it, depending which way they're coming. So, the whole thing, the challenge became making sure that you focused in on where you located stop signs, to make sure, the biggest thing about the whole thing was to make sure that the flow of traffic, where there's no queuing going up towards the hill we have near the Goodrich House, or former Goodrich House, so that's the key, is to make sure that we get good flow into there, so...
So, is the actual entrance to the park going to be from Strickland Street, or from Gospel Lane?
No, it'll be, it's from Gospel, but I'm just, I'm sorry, I always explain from Strickland, just because we spent so much time with that, but ultimately...
It's really both, neither road is going to be closed, Strickland will basically, you know, Strickland's going to come down and basically dip, so you have a radius, so that you can then come up and square into Route 17.
Okay.
And the access road from the park will then come and basically tee into the bottom of that dip.
Oh.
The key is that, and one of the reasons when we looked at potential other options, is that the way the road has to get configured, to, so that we can square it up, it impacts some wetlands. So, if we were going to start restarting the process now and look at different options, you're going to restart everything right down to inland wetlands, you're going to restart the OSTA process, which is basically the approval with the state, which means you have, you know, you have additional costs and everything else, so if you reduce moderately, like a little bit on the cost of the entrance, you could eat that up in additional engineering approvals and other things that need to get done. It just didn't make seemingly a lot of sense to do that risk, in terms of the, in terms of the project itself, especially given the bids, and some of the value engineering that is being done within the bid itself, it, we can afford to do the option one as it is, the add all one.
So, the main thing to emphasize why there's probably a higher cost for it, is because when you're going to be coming into the entrance, they have to go with straight walls where the entrance is, because if they tapered it at all, we'd be impacting more wetlands, and now we'd have to be concerned about whether we'd go over the limit where we'd have to bring in Army Corps of Engineers to do an evaluation. So, they have to come in with very, very straight walls, so you restrict the amount of space. Plus, they had to raise it up enough, that was one of the things the state had called for, is to make sure that you raise it up high enough, so that when they approach 17, they have a very clear view. They're not looking, now you're kind of, you're looking up.
Yeah.
So, they wanted it to come in, so you're sitting flush with that, and you're looking straight out at those roads.
Okay, thank you.
And on the backside, there's additional information. And in addition, the Dorita has identified several value engineering items for cost savings, and to increase the contingency amount for the project, so the following items have been identified, and after the award of the base bid and the alternate number one is made, the, there'll be a change order, which will include some items to be probably eliminated or interchanged. So, number one, extruded concrete curbing in lieu of precast concrete curbing will save money. Number two, versalock segmental wall in lieu of ready rock for all the retaining walls will assist with savings. Number three, screen onsite materials for pavement subbase and retaining wall backfill will save money. For the concessions building, split face block in lieu of stone veneer wainscoting will save money. Separate asphalt shingle roofs in lieu of single spanning metal roof will save money. Vinyl siding in lieu of board and battened siding will be a savings. And epoxy flooring in lieu of tile will be savings. And then, removal of the fitness circuit equipment from the project. The total value of these items I've just read will be $411,542 in savings, which will help to achieve toward a contingency of approximately 5% for the project. So, Weston and Sampson recommends that the town award contract number one for the construction of Portland Town Park to Dorita and Sons Construction Company Incorporated, in the amount of their base bid plus the alternate one, which is the amount of $5,599,000. And in addition, they are recommending, and this will occur subsequently, you're not voting on this, it's part of the contract, that the town execute change order number one for deduction of $411,542. So, this allows the project to have a contingency in the event it's needed, and in the event it is not needed, then it allows for some of the other alternates and perhaps other areas to be accommodated for. And I think that would include the playground equipment, right?
Yeah, the playground equipment's not coming out, it's just the exercise equipment would be held off, and then if there's sufficient, if there's sufficient contingency, that could be added back in. That's one of those, because of where that's located in the park, if that had to be installed a little bit later, or if the decision had to be made later to install it using contingency, you don't run into the same problem as if you're trying to do something that's in the middle of a lot of other areas that have already been built. So, it would mean the splash pad, the place gate, all that is in place right up front, because that is so integral in the central, center of the park, and would be more difficult to construct at a later date. You just wouldn't want to get into that, so.
Yeah, and the other thing to note about it is, the reason why we looked at that, there's two reasons, is certainly that's a very large one, because it would be easiest one to do after the fact. The second thing is that, that is one of those items we feel comfortable if we had to, now, we're putting 5% contingency, so the hope is that, at the end of the day, we should be able to get that equipment in, unless something has gone radically wrong. But ultimately, we thought if we had to find an alternate, you know, whether it's donations or sponsorships, whatever, that was a piece of the park where that would be more likely you can, can get that kind of funding, where someone would, you know, sponsor it, or sponsor a piece of equipment or whatever, so...
The other side, when it comes to contingency, that was a big discussion inside of the 17 park committee team, was risk, and how to mitigate risk. And so, you see certain things, that's where we talk about add all one, and mitigating the risk of trying to make a change at this late date. Given that everything's being done onsite in Greenfield, the consideration is probably the two largest risk factors are customer requested changes and customer caused delay. By structuring it the way it's, you know, it's being structured, we are mitigating those risks as much as we can, which means we have a much better chance of having that contingency left over. That is, that is the hope.
Jim or Ralph, so you have as a quote, "As a result of the updated contract value shall be a million," I mean, five million, one eighty-seven, so 5.2 million, we have six million budgeted.
You have engineering, I, great question.
So, what's the, what's the other 800,000? Some of it's contingency, some of it's...
And some of it is your, the money that was eaten up by the engineering that was, has already been performed, the bidding phase services, right, those contracts that were approved.
Yeah.
But then there's also the Amendment Six, which we're not talking about tonight, because we need some additional information on it, that is your construction, basically your construction administration services, and your representative services, to make sure you have onsite inspections to verify things are being built in accordance with the specifications, materials in accordance with the specifications, et cetera.
So, then let me ask you, you think, you have enough there, or is it going to be...
The answer is that, as I understand it, the way with those, with the value engineering that was done, is that including what's currently in Amendment Six, we still have sufficient contingency when we take the value engineering items into account.
Okay. And then, another question, did you take into account, like, like you're going to do an asphalt shingle roof instead of a metal roof? So, there may be, the asphalt roof doesn't have as long a life expectancy, generally?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it just, did you take that into consideration? I guess, or, and...
The answer is right, you may be looking at a 30 or 40-year shingle versus a 50-year on a metal roof frame. There's also, and it's not complete yet, but there is also potential for a little bit more value engineering that's going to evaluate a different type of structure, but that is not ready yet. It's the hope that that would be ready before we go to, before we would actually execute a contract. The key is that we now know what, because we have these numbers, and we know these numbers work, we now know our worst-case scenario, and everything we continue to work on from there should help make it...
What I'm getting at is just, sometimes you think you're saving money, and you cut a bunch of corners, and then two years, five years, 10 years, we're back, oh, we got to replace that, because we didn't, we didn't, you know, use good materials or whatever, so...
Yeah.
I'm just raising the question, I'm not saying this is, I'm not saying I'm unhappy about this, but...
No, believe me, we, we've talked endlessly about that building.
Okay, good. I have a feeling you guys did.
Yeah, the key was still to get a quality building, never going to get a lot of years of service out of, but acknowledging that, you know, to make everything work, we have to look at some adjustments.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Can I make the motion, please?
After 12 years, you should, yeah.
12 years later?
I'll second it.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. So, now, we have a few more things. Let's see, refund of excess payments. Lou?
Okay, I make the motion to refund the excess payments to Mary and James tomorrow in the amount of $300.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Motion carries.
I make a motion to refund the excess payments to Ford Credit Personnel Property Tax in the amount of $150.46.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Status and committee reports.
As I was going to say, the Water and Sewer Committee...
Oh, yeah, that's right.
The Board of Selectmen Water and Sewer Subcommittee did meet earlier this week. We were joined by two members of the Water and Sewer Commission who were able to help. We were discussing some history. But the discussion really is centering around looking at rates, rate structure, the history of where they are, and the needs of what we need to address to bring the, really, the water and sewer rates, or predominantly the sewer rates, into alignment so that we're covering our current deficit, and also taking a look at some of the planned costs for the water system to see how we can also make sure that that stays, that stays in balance as well. So we're planning to meet again, as it stands right now, on Wednesday, the 23rd, would be the next meeting of the Subcommittee.
Then we're going on a, we're meeting actually Friday.
Yeah, we are, the committee, right, the committee members, we're going to take a tour of the facilities, basically of not only the sewer facilities, you know, as much, you know, get an idea of the collection facilities and the extensive of the network, but then also take a look at the water facilities, visit, you know, the reservoir, the tanks, the pump station, things like that, so that the entire team will be level set on the infrastructure.
I think Bob Shay is going to try to join you.
He is, I already spoke with him, and he has our new, yep, as I'm directing, he is going to join.
And make sure you ask Michelle to post that as we... If anyone else wanted to join the committee, she can post it as, if four or more members attend, because it's a regular meeting, so if anyone else is available, it's valuable. I've been on the tour a few times, and it really is very valuable. Let's see, anything else? Public comment? Danielle?
I don't know if I can ask this part.
You can ask anything you'd like.
Do you have wood, what were you talking about? Is it in front of my parents' living, on 35 Strickland?
No, I mean, it's, if you, you mean coming out, you're coming out Strickland, and all you're going to do is...
Well, it's in front of my driveway, I'm not going to be able to go right anymore after the left.
No, it's, Strickland's going to be the same way. It's only going to just veer a little into the park to veer, to make a perpendicular entrance into 17. So that's the only thing that's going to happen. At the end, where Strickland came into 17, you're just going to veer around to come in at a different angle.
All right, no, I'm just...
So nothing else changes.
So we can go out the 17 way, or we can go out...
Yep, nothing else, nothing else is, it's just, so it's a safer way for you to, as opposed to now, where you just gun it and hope. You won't have that.
Well, Ralph, you know, it's kind of going to be like what they did by the Winchester on 66.
Yeah, which made a big difference.
Yeah, yeah, that actually is much better now. They just made, and then they put a light there too, which definitely helps, but, um...
That's not going to help us, Strickland.
No, no.
Nobody pays attention to stop signs or any stop sign. So that's why I had to ask, because we haven't heard, you know, I don't know...
Yeah, it's similar, well, I guess the big thing, we originally had a different design, but then we ended up with this design when we looked at what we had to do, so...
Call the office.
From your standpoint, it's, it's less...
And I know about the wetlands, because we sunk a few vehicles.
But if you want, if you or other residents wanted to look at the plans, you can call the Park and Recreation Office, and I'm sure Ralph or Jim or Sean would be happy to show them.
Any time you want to talk about them.
Be a good, good opportunity, I think.
I know, we're, I mean, I know we're pretty, we're pretty good at what's going on. I mean, just as long as, you know, nothing else kind of shocks us and changes our...
Nope, that's the only thing, that's a tweet from what we originally talked about.
Our yard, I'm saying, so, you know. That's about it, I mean, just so we know that...
Oh, we did add parking in your backyard, was that okay?
Yeah, can I stand out there?
There you go.
That's all I had to ask.
Thank you. The next is Board of Selectmen, general informal discussion. Ralph, did you have something?
Yeah, so what I would like to do is, if you could put on one of the next couple of, the agenda of the next couple of meetings, to have us discuss whether we would like to have an exploratory committee to look at putting a dog park. And I'll work with, I'll work with Sean and the Park and Rec Chair...
Okay.
To talk about, to talk about guidelines about what the intent would be, intent would be for that committee.
Very good. I'll put that on a future June, June 6. I have nothing under follow-up, so I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. It shouldn't be very long. Contract negotiations for Freestone Exploration Discovery Park, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So if it's okay with everybody, we'll take a brief recess while everybody packs up their...